Okay, I would like to call the Tuesday, July 18th, Longmont Housing Authority Board of Commissioners to order. Before we move, I'd like to, uh, I'm gonna make a motion to suspend by reference Council Rule of Procedure twenty-five point two, point A, point two, to allow for Commissioner McCoy to participate remotely in this meeting. Do you have a second? Second? So it's been moved by myself, Councillor Martin seconded it. May I have a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So that passes unanimously. And I would also like to, I'm gonna just move forward. Do we need two of these motions? Okay. To allow electronic participation, participa- okay. Participation by Commissioner McCoy for seven eighteen, twenty twenty-three Longmont Housing Authority Board of Commissioners meeting. Second? Okay. Okay, so Councillor Edogo Ferry seconded that. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It carries unanimously. So let's have a roll call. I'll start, Mayor, no, Chair Joe Peck.
Chair Rodriguez, Commissioner.
Archbishop Martin.
Tim Waters, Tim Waters, Commissioner.
Harold Dominguez, Inter-Monumental Executive Director.
Molly Adorno, Housing Director.
Henry Daniels, Kenda Supervisor.
Our Essex Executive Assistant.
Commissioner.
Tim Wall, Assistant City Director.
Um, Susie Edogo Ferry, Commissioner.
Security Admiral, Commissioner.
Dana, David Paul, Inger.
Great.
Jeff Lee, Housing Executive Director.
Erica, Illinois, Martin, Inger.
Katie Putten, Housing Executive Director.
Thank you. Uh, now we need approval of the June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three minutes. May I have a motion?
I move approval.
Second. Right, the move by Councillor Waters, seconded by Councillor Yargo. Do we have any questions about those moves? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All right, all right. All those opposed? That carries unanimously. We are not publicly invited, be heard. Is there anybody in public? I don't see anyone. It's all closed, publicly invited, be heard. Moving on to older business, the sale of the six fifteen Main Street property.
Uh, Mayor?
Chair.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have two resolutions over that?
Yeah, before we start, one of the things I wanna say is I appreciate you again accommodating the schedule to slide this in between executive session and the other meeting. Based on what we were seeing in the meeting of the board here, timing in terms of the supplemental of applications for the next funding round was critical, and that's why we asked you all to shift the schedule because it's really dependent on the Hoover project and the sale of these other properties. So again, thank you for accommodating us.
You're welcome.
So I will go ahead and give a very brief introduction about the six fifteen Main Building. Um, this is the small commercial building located next to what is now being called Village on Main on Main Street. And the Center for People with Disabilities has leased that from us for since at least twenty fourteen, and they're interested in buying. And now that we are doing the Village Place re-syndication, um, we're separating the two properties and all of the documentation, um, because we really don't need to operate that building, and so it could be a good source of revenue generation and serve the mission of the CPWD to be able to stay and provide services to the communities. Uh, the, we did a market analysis of the property value. It was six hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Uh, we've been negotiating with the CPWD a reduced purchase price in exchange for services. The price we've agreed to as of tonight is five hundred thousand dollars. Um, so that a hundred and forty thousand dollar difference is really five years' worth of services, about twenty-eight thousand dollars per year, to provide enhanced outreach to LHA residents, um, that experienced disabilities or care for someone with a disability. Um, really doing targeted outreach to them, increasing uptake in their services, doing training and life skills sessions, et cetera. So what you have here is a resolution to approve the purchase and sale agreement. Uh, and I do need to mention that we still need to work out an easement with them once we're, after the purchase and sale agreement is signed, then we start working with title and preparing for closing, and we need to work with them on an easement to make sure that they still have access across the Village on Main property to get to their building and parking and such. So that's something that we would follow up with. Um, and then the second resolution is to approve, to approve the memorandum of understanding that we have negotiated with them for those services.
Great, thank you for that explanation. Can I have a motion for Resolution twenty twenty-three, twenty-two?
I move approval of Resolution twenty-two, twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two.
And I'll second that. So it's been moved by Councillor Waters, seconded by myself. Um, all those in favor? Aye. Oh, Commissioner Waters, I seconded.
Just call me whatever.
Okay, it's been moved by whatever. All those opposed? Uh, that passes unanimously. Resolution twenty twenty-three, twenty-three, approve execution of memorandum of understanding with the Center for People with Disabilities. Can I have a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
Right, it's been moved by Councillor Martin, uh, seconded by, nope. It's been approved by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Waters. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? That passes unanimously. We have another resolution. Uh, is someone going to explain this one?
Very briefly.
Okay.
Um, this is just approval of the contract with Rosman and Associates, our protect on the Village on Main rehab and syndication project. Um, we selected them from a competitive RFP late last year, and they've been offering out off of a letter of agreement while we got ready for tax credits in the middle. We've been awarded tax credits, and we're working on finalizing the agreement. Um, as part of this, they're also holding some of their invoices until closing so that we can just plan ahead and everything really, really happens at closing at this time. So I'm available for any questions?
So I move, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, which is the approval of the execution of contracted Rosman and Associates. Um, can I have a second? Second. Is there any discussion? All those in favors now? Aye. All those opposed? That passes unanimously. We're now at Resolution twenty twenty-three, twenty-five, the dedication of the project-based vouchers.
Okay, so we're gonna do a good amount of discussion on this one. Um, truly trying to focus our time tonight on IGM-CMD, which is from the staff side. Um, so we, the LHA has authority to issue twenty-six project-based vouchers at this time. Uh, you might recall, recall that in, earlier in the spring, uh, we did one round of competitive awards for project-based vouchers that were awarded to Village on Main, and this is our second round that we are putting out to really focus on family properties. And so we did a competitive RFP process, um, which is required by the, the HUD rules for putting these out. Um, out of our twenty-six that we have authority to issue, back in twenty twenty, late twenty twenty-one, early twenty twenty-two, when we were negotiating the Chrisman Two deal, we agreed with MGL and put it in our development agreement that at some point in time, if eight project-based vouchers were available, then we would, um, dedicate them to Chrisman Two. Um, that is going to come back into play for a moment. So if we consider, um, the twenty-six and then the potential eight for Chrisman Two, then that leaves eighteen. So when we put out our request for proposals for, uh, projects that we used the vouchers, we used it, we put out eighteen for competitive. Um, we ended up receiving two proposals. One is for the Ascent on Hoover project, and then one is for, um, that's, they requested the full eighteen, and then the Atwood Commons project requested eight. Um, so basically, we do not have enough vouchers to issue, to commit to all of them now. As we work on our two-year tool over the next few years, it's always assuming we get extra HUD funding and do our performance measures, we should be able to increase our voucher authority over time, but at this time, we don't have enough vouchers to issue all of them. So I have really kind of laid out in your council, in your memo to the Housing Authority Board, what we have to, to think about here. So for the Chrisman project, that project is already in construction. They have, they have filled their gap to the point that they made it to a deal and they are constructing. So really at this point, adding project-based vouchers, depending on which units they put them on, could make some of those units more affordable to lower-income families, but also on the financing side, what it would really do is allow MGL to make their fee quicker because the, the fund would perform better. They would make more because we have agreed to develop reviews, et cetera, but they would make that quicker, and LHA could come in quicker. Um, they also didn't need to respond to the proposal because it's very, um, interesting rules, but if you are able to fund your project without the vouchers, you don't have to compete for them. So they didn't have to respond, so they can just kind of be considered on the, on the side. Um, I should also say that for Chrisman, we can apply those vouchers at any time. All that they're looking for is performance improvement, not necessarily getting a deal to closing. Um, so that is something to consider. On Hoover and Atwood, those two, we did perform evaluations on, subject to the criteria that we put in our RFP, and so those scoring sheets are in your file. Hoover did score higher because it hit some of the key parameters they were going for based on our community needs, for family units and, and, you know, special, extraordinary benefits to the community, but they're both eligible, and they both have really good points about them. They just kind of applied them in a different way. Um, I would say that the likelihood of CHAFPA awarding both Hoover and Atwood is extremely low, extremely low. We're more likely to get neither of them funded than both of them funded in the same, in a single year. And so, um, what we had thought of as an option that is outlined in your memo is that because CHAFPA will ultimately be making this decision, at least for twenty twenty-three, that we could wait and see which projects get selected, if any. Um, that gives some flexibility to say, you know, if, if one moves forward faster than the other, then we can go with that one and then, um, look long-term. If that project stays on the radar and keeps trying, then we can see how our voucher authority increases or, or availabilities out there. Um, to do that, we would have to put a hold on considering the Chrisman vouchers. And so I, if, if we waited for CHAFPA to decide on an awarded project between the two, we would know in about November, and at that time, if both aren't awarded, which again, the, the chances are very, very low, then we could pick that Chrisman decision back up as well. So that is the recommendation from staff, is to, um, put conditional awards out for both the Hoover and Atwood projects, see which one is successful in tax credits, and then re-circle back in November to see if Chrisman needs to be considered, or if we need to, um, if none are awarded, do we just consider what happens in twenty twenty-four?
Um, are the developers aware that they're in competition and say? Atwood's been going out of business because of us.
No, I mean, these projects, the project-based vouchers are so valuable, and both projects are, are seeking outside funding from various places, but, um, this is, these vouchers are really critical to these projects being feasible.
Sure.
And so, um, that's why if you conditionally award both, then we can see what happens and then really make the call, and hopefully, eventually, all of them could get what they need, but it might just have to be sprinkled out.
So, um, I do have questions, but let's make the motion first, and then we'll open it for discussion. So do I have a motion to move Resolution twenty twenty-three, twenty-four? No, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five.
Is it spelled out, or do you need us to decide whether it?
Dedication.
It is spelled out in the resolution, uh, where it conditionally dedicates eighteen to the ascent at Hoover, eight to Atwood, subject to a border liatex in twenty twenty-three. We don't get specific on Chrisman because we kind of just push that decision to the rubber in this recommendation.
Second? Second. All right, so it would be seconded to move Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five. Is there any discussion? And I have a question. So how often can you apply for these project-based vouchers? For example, if you don't get any of them, is it open again next year? Is it open in six months? Is it, at what point is this gonna be upheld?
It is open as long as we have the authority to issue it and that we can work it into our voucher, you know, big network of how all the vouchers piece together. So I would say just for some precedent, the last time LHA put out project-based vouchers was in advance of the twenty eighteen Fall River project, so it's been several years, but also we're making big changes in our voucher program and tries and trying to grow it, and so I wouldn't expect that we would have to wait that long again to get more project-based vouchers.
Yeah, it's pretty important. All right, so that has been, a motion's been made, let's vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So that passes unanimously. We're now at Resolution twenty twenty-three, twenty-six, approving of certain matters in connection with the ascent, ascent.
And our development partnership is coming in, and they're gonna be showing the presentation for us. Eric, can you have that presentation?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm ready to show it.
I'm sure we share.
Okay.
We're going to drive it off.
Yeah, I go too.
Oh, I was, I was.
And you can't click, you gotta drive it to the.
Yes.
Now, same show.
Concept plans looking better and better. Or at least it's a better artist. Yeah. I'm sure. We're the best.
Wish to join you.
Where every. Yeah, we can just kind of cluster this. No, you're on. We're conditioned to award an eighteen project-based voucher. Just.
Yeah. That's exciting. All right. Wonderful.
Should we get some, uh, roll call here?
Interesting.
Get into that.
Absolutely. Um, I'll, I'll go first. I met you all before. I was here a couple months ago. I'm Shannon Cox Baker, um, Regional Vice President for the Penrose Mountain Region Office, so it's a season, thanks for having me.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Brad Whining, a new member of the Penrose team, joined Shannon a year out there in Denver, and most recently for the last two and a half plus years worked in the city and county of Denver in the housing department.
I'm Tom Anderson. I'm a Senior Vice President with Penrose. I oversee the western states from Chicago to Texas and out here to Colorado. I'm actually based in Kansas City.
Wow, huge area. So, um, do you wanna lead this discussion?
Sure, I was gonna let them kind of present the concept of the project first, as we prepare for tax credit applications. I'm driving, Shannon.
Okay.
And are we behind? We can make this as fast as we.
We're good on time.
We're good now. We moved quick.
We just have a handful of slides, just wanted to kind of, I think when I was here a couple months ago, it was still very conceptual. We hadn't really totally dialed in exactly what we were doing. So the first few slides is just related to bringing up to speed on where we are, and then, um, and then we have some free features. So, um, so we've officially named the project the Ascent at Hoover Crossing, um, which I think is a, a really great name, and it's reflected a bit in the, the architecture as well, and sort of, um, a nod to the mountain escape. Um, so just to kind of catch you up on, uh, the work we've done since we were selected as, um, LHA's development partner, uh, which obviously that's the first one there that our Q process concluded in December of last year, and so that really was when we kicked off an earnest with our, um, uh, visioning for the project and putting all the parts and pieces together. And since that time, um, we've, uh, been able to bring in, um, with the city and LHA support, the ARCA funds for the project. Uh, we've been developing a concept in addition to the housing around an early childhood education center on the property, which could have, uh, three or four classrooms. Um, we've been, a lot of really fun conversations with Wild Plum about being the operator for that ECE, a lot of, um, really thoughtful, you know, dialogue around what that would look like and, um, how we would fund that. There's a huge need for more head start, early childhood classes, and this is just a great site for it, um, so we're, we can give you a little bit more detail on that, but really looking to knit that into the, to the overall development. And then, I think it was just last month, we were also conditionally awarded one point eight million from the city in soft funds for the project, uh, and we've also secured a funding award from, or a soft funding award or soft funding commitment from the Colorado Division of Housing. So, um, and then tonight, obviously, with the Communal PPD award. So all of that is to say, we are perfectly on track for our August first Longmont Housing Tax Credit application submission, so we're pretty shy of two weeks to get that submitted. Um, the total capital stack of the project's about thirty-five, thirty-seven million, and so we're fully, fully sourced, we should say, for, um, being able to fund the construction of the housing piece. And so the, the financing for the early childhood education piece is, we're running on its own track, and we've been having lots of really good conversations with foundations, um, and with the state, uh, and obviously we're aware of Boulder County, where the cause applications upcoming too, so we're really trying to figure out how we can piecemeal together funding to pay for that piece too. And, um, uh, we'll jump right into the financing, we'll talk a little bit more about the programming and the unit mix and the AMI mix, but just in terms of the schedule, you know, again, tax credit applications due August first, awards would be announced in mid-November, and if we kind of, uh, if we get an award and we keep running on our current schedule, we would be looking at closing on the financing and breaking ground about this time next year. So that would be, that would be a coup. We're hoping for that. See you next time.
This is very touchy.
Yeah.
Let's hurry up. Yeah, let me try again. Oh, we might as well.
That was the outline, we need to dive into.
Okay.
Maybe, let's, let's come back to this one.
This is the act.
This is incredible summary.
Yeah, okay, oh, I understand that. Okay. So this isn't, this isn't super fun to look at, we'll get to the pictures in a minute, but it's, we're talking about a total of seventy-five apartments, um, and you can see here, if you follow the column down, twenty-one bedrooms, twenty-two bedrooms, twenty-one threes, and six four bedrooms. So again, the original vision for the project is to really serve as many large families as possible, and so we think, um, where we're at with, you know, twenty-seven total three and four-bedroom units is, is gonna make a big dent, I think, in the, in the city's inventory of larger housing units. And then if you follow, um, across this way, and I know these are, this is small font, but, um, the, the income mix is here, so, um, we've got eighteen units at thirty percent AMI, nine at forty percent AMI, and four at fifty percent AMI, which combined is about forty-two, forty-three percent of the whole seventy-five units would be at fifty percent AMI and below. And then the balance of that, um, are at seventy and eighty percent AMI. And so the average income for the whole project is about fifty-seven percent AMI, and we can talk a little bit more about what that means, but income, income averaging is, um, a new way to finance these types of projects, and so it does require one of, um, the very low-income runs and the very high-income runs, but they have to average at sixty or below, so we, we really should accomplish that. Um, again, income averaging, really the, there's a couple of reasons why it's important to do that. One of the key ones is it, it allows us to serve a really wide band of, of households, right? Anywhere from really thirty percent AMI to eighty percent AMI, which is a nice mix across the spectrum. It also allows for some cross subsidies, so those higher-income units can help us provide more lower-income, and, um, you know, again, sort of cross subsidized with the higher and the lower rents. And then, um, three and four-bedroom units are more expensive to build, um, so again, that's, all of these parts and pieces sort of fit together. We don't have any sixty percent AMI units at least targeted to that because that's, there's a lot of that in Longmont, so we're really trying to serve on the, the lower and the higher end of that. Um, so just to point this out here, this is sort of the, this, um, the floor plan. As you can see, there's really two buildings. They're kind of bifurcated by a walkway here that connects to your senior properties up here.
Um, what is it? Hoover, I'm sorry, Parkston and Lodge.
Yeah, so that way across the street there, and it's just a nice visual connection to those properties, but they, really, the connection here is to the community building. And so the community building would have a playground, um, there would be indoor space for, you know, it could be game nights or, um, just indoor play area for residents. Mail would be their property management with office there, there'd be a leasing office there and maintenance, so right there in the middle of the property.
Fitness Center.
What's that?
Fitness Center.
And Fitness Center, too, yes. Um, and then in blue here is where we're targeting the early childhood education. So it's a nice anchor on the corners, two-story building, and again, um, whether or not the financing comes together for that, the housing stands on its own, so we're moving ahead of the package for that. Okay.
Where we are?
Yes.
Yeah, you wanna jump in?
Sure, Shannon touched on this a little bit, but the kind of, the income averaging thing is a new addition to the IRS tax credit program, years back, and really until this past year, didn't take off because there were lots of questions around how it would work, but on paper, the idea is exactly what Shannon said, right? That, you know, within the same level of revenue production from the property, you can serve a much wider swath of residents, including those who are in far less, and get out of the kind of box that everybody was in before, which was making as many units as possible at sixty percent AMI because that used to be the upper cap, and so you'd get a whole bunch of properties that had all of the units restricted at sixty percent AMI, which certainly there was a great need for, but you started to see like we did at our market set here, where there's a, there's a bit of a saturation, um, at that level. And so being able to diversify what we offer is one great reason to do it. Another, again, is to get out of that kind of concentration of sixty percent AMI. And then just from a market perspective, this slide is something that I put together in a, in a prior life, but it kind of shows based on data and analytics across the metro kind of area in Denver, that when you're comparing it to, to new build multifamily, decent quality products, right, that there, there is a gap at the eighty percent level currently, but what's more important is if you look ten or fifteen years out, if the trend continues where rents grow, housing costs grow at a clip faster than incomes, you'll see a much, you know, wider swath and a definite gap where there will be an imminent need. And so while we're not underwriting and expecting to maximize the absolute maximum rents on those units, it allows the property to be able to continue to operate and, and provide a service that is important now and will be even increasingly more important in ten or fifteen years in the life of this project, and we feel like that's a, an important component and perhaps an underappreciated aspect of the income averaging program. So it looks complicated on paper, but we feel like it's a, ultimately a better outcome because of the diversity and because of the, the kind of, the, the, the mix of interests and backgrounds and incomes that can live together in one place and share the same amenities and hopefully, early childhood education center. And speaking of, um, just, again, you know, this isn't a, kind of, wouldn't it be cool if we did this? We put some rigor behind it, we tell our architect team, kind of, design it, they, they're familiar with state requirements, we talked to Wild Plum about it, they've helped put together kind of what this looks like, but effectively we've got what we believe can be three classrooms plus all of the requisite kind of family reception areas, you know, playgrounds, square footage for every kid, indoor and outdoor, um, in a very safe and secure and easy-to-access, um, environment. So just for fun, we kind of, to show you guys, we, this is kind of what we're thinking it would, it would look like, it could fit it onto the site, and, um, you know, with Wild Plum as a, as a kind of partner in this whole thing, we think we can hopefully pull together, right, this added component, which would make a great project, even that one's greater. And then the rest, I think, are just images from, from our architect team. If you wanna just flip through them, Molly, you know, quickly or slowly, but that's just kind of images of what it would, what it would look like. You can see in the lower-left corner, kind of the aspect you're looking at. I believe this is the southeast corner, looking northwest. Uh, opposite corner, that's the, that would be the, you know, early childhood education center, you can kind of see the exterior, the, the signage, and it'll be a, a, a protected stairwell from upstairs to downstairs to get to the playground without having to go through the parking lot or, um, anything like that. And then kind of a bird's-eye view, the whole property. One or two more, but just to seed you, and that, that's kind of looking directly at that, that would be the EC building on the left with a kind of its own, uh, playground, community center, kind of on your, on your right as you look through it from the, from the north, I guess, maybe.
Maybe we can go back to the, the resolution slide if you want to, and hit the highlights and all that. Yep. Um, so this, this is, I think, what's before you all this evening, um, is to approve the resolution to essentially authorize, um, uh, LHA to negotiate and enter into a developer. to essentially authorize LHA to negotiate and enter into a developer MOU with Penrose and a purchase and sale agreement. And then upon an award of tax credits, it would be the next step, which is negotiating the co-general partner development agreement, the special limited partner agreement, the property management agreement. And then subsequently, all the loan agreements that would come into the deal with the, you know, 1.8 million, the ARCA funds, and then the seller carry note, which is how the land will get transferred into the project. And then lastly, just to execute and deliver any, and, you know, all other documents related to closing on the financing for the tax credit program. So that, that's it for our presentation, we're happy to answer any questions you have. Just be here to be helpful.
The agreements that are detailed here, or to which you refer, would all be seriously negotiated subsequent to awarding of tax credits.
There's, there's two that we need in order to apply for the tax credits. The purchase and sale agreement and, which is conditioned on an award of tax credit amongst several other things. And then we really feel like it's good practice to, you know, at least put on paper and agree to the business terms of the co-developer agreement. So that's what the MOU is. And that's really more of a good faith agreement that will then be replaced after a tax credit award with a legally binding developer agreement. Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
There are a lot of solar panels on the roof. Is this an energy resource for the city? Are the details of that fleshed out yet or is that a separate agreement from this one?
We are, we have a minimum requirement through the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority. So to apply for tax credits, we have to hit what is a pretty high benchmark for green building and sustainability features. So we're definitely doing that, but we've been having, we've had one kickoff design meeting with our, our sustainability consultants, with folks from Longmont Power, to really talk about like, how do we, how do we integrate this with some of the bigger goals and the vision that the city has in terms of, you know, energy conservation and renewable generation? And so we're sort of at the early stages of that.
This is 100% electric building, so there'd be no gas consumption, which we're excited about.
We've also had conversations with Five Rivers Power. And so Five Rivers went be in, in the discussion on all of this and probably foot batteries and some other components. But there's a chance this can connect to a larger distributed energy system in that area that we're still trying to put all of it together.
Okay, seeing no more discussion, can we have a motion to, motion for Resolution 2023-26, approve certain matters in connection with the ascent at Hoover Crossing?
I'll move Resolution 2023-26.
All right.
Second.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner McCoy.
So it was moved by Commissioner Hidalgo Ferring, seconded by Commissioner McCoy. Let's vote, all those in favor? All those opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Fingers crossed we need it, yeah, in November.
Have you looked into heat pumps?
At heat pumps? No. Like a ground source heat pump or are you going to like a? We have not done, looked at that, no. I think it's a bit cost prohibitive on a project of this scale, but, and I'm not an engineer, but I think the mechanical systems do also operate on heat pumps and are pretty efficient for like the little package units for each of the apartments. I'm out of my depth.
But I like the answer.
Yeah.
I think the answer is yes, but by the individual units, not for the entire property. Because, because it is 100% electric. You have to have that heat pump technology up there.
But these are rentals, correct?
Yes.
So we would be responsible for the individual units putting in. Is that cost prohibitive as well?
That's.
We're building it.
We're building it, yeah.
Okay. I didn't understand that. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful evening.
If I could take you for a quick minute, one thing I would say is, so you've taken some action on a few things that are related to project-based vouchers and in this project. If one of them gets selected by CHAFPA for tax credits, we will be at property four or six property goal. If two of them do it, we'll be at five. And that's obviously not including the work we're doing, we must make. So a lot of progress we get that since.
I'm impressed. Really goes time.
Exactly. So we're at the last Resolution 2023-27, approval of tenant accounts receivable write-offs.
So we have started the collection process, we have sent 13 tenants over to collections. The total is $25,000. Most of that is attributed to three half units, which totaled about $289,000 of that. The rest are small and normally Harold approves those, but since we were doing this big chunk, it was such a large amount, we just said, let's have the board go ahead and approve that. We had three that are not going to collections. Two of those are deceased tenants. One, we had to get a police report because the guy ended up moving out and he passed away in another hotel or apartment complex. And then one actually passed away. So those will go ahead and write off. And then the other one was so good, it was under $500, that was just on. All the administrative records, so send two collections, so we're writing them off too.
Are people still in the units, other than two that passed away?
No, these are all passed. These are all passed tenants. So these are all the ones that we did our due diligence to try and get a payment plan. With them, a lot of them don't give us forwarding addresses, so it's hard to connect with anybody. But my understanding is it goes to collections and we have up to six years to try to forward on this. But the write-off goes to write it off the books because we don't want our property managers as well doing any of the functions. So once it's, once it's at collections, they forward all communication to the collection. You can see a network here from here.
Okay.
Good job.
Plus that probably clears up with that new software system.
About that's open-ended.
Yeah. Yeah. It makes our list go a little more.
And then you're doing, you're trying to do this ahead of budget.
Well, we'll start doing this, so what we want to start doing is actually coming to the board at the point where we're sending these to collections, especially if we haven't had a written off by you. So the majority, we'd like to get written off as much as we can by the end of the year. So it's not just books is written off and we're not putting this huge allowance for delta accounts on the books. So we'll do that as we go. Harold can approve anything $5,000 or less. And if that's the case, he'll approve them and just keep giving them a listing. I think I'm fair to say, here's what's, what's all been written off. I imagine where we're going, unless there's a meth unit, it's usually the meth units or the higher damaged units that will have to be reviewed as well.
All right, thank you for that. Can I have a motion for 2023-27, seven, approval of tenant accounts receivable write-offs? So moved. Second. Right, it's been moved by Commissioner, uh, seconded by Commissioner Hidalgo Ferring. Let's vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So that passes unanimously. Do we have any comments from commissioners?
Just, just, just on this last set of tables. It would be helpful to me if we could have a table that would be a little more easily read. The one that's in.
Yeah, that, that came specifically from EC services, so it's a report that they generate. We can definitely.
Whoever generates, if it's going to show up in our packet, it ought to be readable.
What, what data?
This is a general.
Because I might just have to tone what fields to select. I know, I just have the same thing.
Yes, I mean, I just, I just enlarged it and I read it online, so I can see it. So it's in there.
Yeah. We'll try and flag it if we have a document that needs to be printed in large format.
Print it out, yeah. No, but I did have to come online, this was too small. So can I have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
Second. Okay, moved by Commissioner Waters, seconded by Commissioner Hidalgo Ferring. All those in favor, adjourning?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned.